Good morning, Mr. Glass. Brett Glass. From days ago last week, you requested opportunity to preview the city council agenda for Laramie. And to do so weekly, I appreciate your idea. I appreciate your dedication to city matters and city review. You sought election to the city council in two thousand twenty-four in Ward Two. And that didn't, that didn't happen for you, but you stay, you stay involved and you stay interested. Why?
Well, the same reason why I ran for council, I'm concerned about which way Laramie is going. I want to make sure their money is spent wisely, especially as property taxes are going to be cut and that's going to impact the city budget. I care about the quality of life in Laramie because I live here and I intend to stay here. And so I want the city to be managed well. And that's why I'm very interested in what city council is doing. I'll talk today about a couple of things that, you know, that are particularly interesting that citizens might want to comment on that might otherwise slip by.
Looking at the agenda for the city of Laramie, city council regular meeting, those meetings are held in City Hall. Council Chambers, four oh six Iverson Avenue. If you've not attended those, it'll be tomorrow, Tuesday, February fourth, two thousand twenty-five, six thirty P M with a pre-council meeting beginning at six fifteen. Pre-council meeting opportunity for council to look at their agenda. And the nine city council members can pull items from consent agenda and, and discuss order, discuss who exactly will present the motions and proceed through the meetings. Is there any public comment that you would have regarding consent agenda items or anything before consent agenda items?
Yes, well, this is actually discussed during the work session last week. The consent agenda, for those, you know, for those of you who are not familiar with what it does, is a bundle of items that city council votes on as, as a bundle with no discussion. They just vote up or down to approve the whole thing. And because there's no discussion, they need not to be controversial items. And unfortunately, sometimes important and controversial items slip by on the consent agenda. So it's the public's job to look it over and make sure this doesn't happen. There's no official opportunity for the public to comment on this during the meeting. So we need to look at it in advance and contact our council members by email or by telephone and let them know we want items to be pulled from the agenda. By the way, this is something that I've asked them to fix. And during the work session last week, they talked about specifically allowing the public to comment on the, on removing items from the consent agenda at the beginning of the meeting. But they haven't changed that yet. So right now, we need to contact them in advance if we see anything on there that needs to be pulled.
So that would be a rule, rules of procedure requested change, is that right?
That is correct. And they, they, whenever, whenever there's a new council, they set their rules of procedure and propose changes to them. We haven't seen proposed changes yet coming out of the work session, but I'm hoping that this is one that they're going to make. In the meantime, though, we, we should comment in advance, at least if there's something that's, that's, that's worth being pulled. Now, for the meeting of Tuesday, February fourth, which is tomorrow, most of the items are very routine. There are things like approving the minutes of previous meetings, granting deeds to plots in the city cemetery, and approving payments to utilities or contractors. And there's nothing exciting on this one. However, it is worth looking at because it does have one important item, which is the schedule of council work sessions for February and March. So if you're interested in chiming in on local issues ranging from financial transparency to utility discounts for low-income residents, to detection and prevention of human trafficking, which is the topic of one work session that's coming up, you're going to want to look over that list of work sessions on the city's website and, and see if there's something on which you want to comment. Then you can go to the, you can go to the work session or you can comment in advance by email and you can have some say in those things.
It's interesting to me, the detail that goes into a breakout, a ten-item breakout, A through I, in item nine on the, on the agenda, that is the consent agenda section. And at any one time, I've seen sets of ten, twenty, thirty items in this, in this section, and they're all not mundane.
That's true. Some things have slipped by in the past. I commented, a couple of months ago, I commented on one of them, which approved a low-income tax credit housing project, which is big money for a developer to come in and build a housing project, where they hadn't thoroughly investigated it or talked about it. I did my own research and discovered that, in fact, the, the so-called developer, which was proposing to do the project, was actually a shell company based in a U P S store in Idaho. It was just literally just a post office box. And council hadn't researched that. That was something which should have been pulled from the consent agenda and was not. And they went ahead and rubber stamped it. I'm hoping that W C D A, which provides the housing grants, actually took a better look at this. But, but council rubber stamped that and they shouldn't have. And that's why the, that's why the, the public needs to be vigilant about the consent agenda.
And regarding nine I scheduled meetings, do you have any specific hope with respect to what transpires in that section, Brett?
Again, this is something which might change. It's not set in stone. But it's, really the thing that we need to do, that, that needs to change is not the, the item, but public awareness of it. We need to publish prominently the schedule of work sessions so that people know what's coming. And right now, this is buried in the agenda deep in the city's website. What we need to do is make sure that there is a very public calendar of what council is doing so that the public can be involved. So again, no, there's, there's nothing in there that's really a surprise or that's, it's really other than mundane. But the, the public needs to know about it more. And well, I'll get to this a little later. There's a, there's a list of, the council is going to adopt a list of goals, which hopefully will, and one, one of the goals will hopefully, hopefully facilitate that.
I did see for February, want to give, give some credit to the city as the staff have highlighted, some of the Fed, February dates and, and important things to consider in their schedule. So we'll highlight that at the end or later on the talk shop in the nine o'clock hour. But as you proceed through item ten, the regular agenda, your highlights, Brett.
Yep, okay. Well, the draft agenda has a few routine items and one or two more interesting ones. For example, there's one that gives U W permission to run a fiber optic line underground across Twenty Second Street. That's no big deal. The university needs to do that in order to connect its buildings. But there are a couple of items which might be of special interest to the members of the public and I'd like to cover those. Item eleven seems routine, but it isn't. It's a resolution which says it clarifies the purposes of the city's Economic Development Fund, which is basically a pot of money that's used for economically develop, economic development in the city. Now, in fact, this resolution doesn't really clarify it. It expands it and liberalizes it to allow the money to be expended for absolutely anything which the city council deems to be an economic development initiative or an economic development program.
Isn't everything the city of Laramie does to promote that in our city, that, that economic gain and benefit?
Yes, and that's the problem. If we liberalize this too much, then the money can be used for absolutely everything and, you know, or anything, and there's really no control over that. So we need to be careful about approving this item and pub, and the public may want to comment on it. It, 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 unfortunately, it really takes off any constraints, any oversight with regard to the use of that money. And the, it, there is an item all the way at the other end of Tuesday's agenda, which is a big grant which the city wants to make from that fund and therefore would have to justify as an economic development initiative. It's kind of concerning that the, that the city has put these two items at opposite ends of the agenda so it doesn't look like they're related, but they are very much so. And there are some questions as to whether the grant in the final item really is an economic development initiative. So I'll talk more about that a little later when we get to that last.
Specifically, you've referenced Resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixteen, clarifying the purpose of the Economic Development Fund of the city of Laramie, Wyoming. And that I being regular agenda item eleven. The second you're speaking of is agenda item nineteen, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash fourteen, authorizing financial support of the Pilot Hill Trailhead project from the Economic Development Fund and amending appropriations for the fiscal year two thousand twenty-five to two thousand twenty-six biennial budget of the city of Laramie, Wyoming.
Yes, and if, should we talk about that now?
I'd say roll.
Okay, well, item nineteen on the agenda is of interest to outdoor enthusiasts and also those concerned with, again, fiscal, you know, the, the economic development and, and, and fiscal responsibility. Item nineteen, at the very end, at the opposite end from the resolution we just talked about, approves a hefty two hundred thousand dollar grant to the Pilot Hill Trailhead project from the city's Economic Development Fund. And it justifies the grant by saying that the project will contribute significantly to local economic development through tourism and recreation visitation. Now, remember I said, I said that item eleven was a resolution which said that an economic development program initiative is whatever council says it is and that our Economic Development Fund could be used to pay for it. And now that's key to allowing this grant because no one's done any actual studies to show that the Pilot Hill Trail will cause tourists to come to Laramie to visit and visit it like that particular trail. In fact, it really seems to me that the trail is more a recreational facility for residents. And that's fine, I support that. I think it's great to fund the trail. But to use economic development money to fund that grant, the city has to claim that it has an economic development purpose. And that's a bit of a stretch. And the danger isn't necessarily in funding this project, but that it sets a precedent. In the future, the city could claim that nearly anything it wants to fund is an economic development project. And, you know, even if it really should be funded by something like a recreation fund. And that's the real concern here. It's a reason to reconsider how we fund this. And again, I'm perfectly, I'm perfectly glad to see the city fund the trail. But we may not want to set the precedent of funding it out of our Economic Development Fund. We may not want to raid that fund in order to fund this particular project.
What is the difference between the general fund and these specific item funds?
Well, they, again, this, it's, it's a matter of, you know, it's a matter of, of appropriations and setting funds for, you know, set, setting funds aside for specific purposes. The city has, has pledged to make its accounting more transparent. And in fact, they're working on a system which hopefully will let you get on the world wide web and go and see, see how all the funds are allocated. Yeah, and, and again, you know, there are specific funds allocated, not just the general fund, but there are funds, you know, appropriated for recreation and things like that. Again, the question is, if we set aside funds for a particular purpose, do we, do we want them to be used for a purpose which is only vaguely related to that purpose? Do we want to stretch things like that?
So Brett, to your research, how many pages of documentation and city staff support material were included in the packet for the city council to reference behind each one of these deals of one hundred and forty-seven pages? How many pages are allocated to this, to this particular topic of economic development money?
Very little. There, there were about, you know, e- each, the summary of each item was really short. It's about, you know, maybe, maybe four pages here. And so there, there really isn't much. This is, again, this is being, this is sort of being rushed through, which is kind of makes me uncomfortable again, even though the cause is good. I think, I think the way it's being done needs some consideration by the public.
And then as you, as you participated in researching a preview for tomorrow night's city council meeting, do items twelve with licensure of the University of Wyoming to construct use maintain that, that right away? You said that's normal, you said that's customary.
Yes, that's normal.
To connect with internet infrastructure.
Well, yeah, this, the city, the, I mean, the, the, the university owns property on both sides of the street. It's perfectly reasonable for them to drill under the street and put in a fiber optic line to connect the two. No problem with that, it's done for, it's done for private parties as well. No, no, no problem there. And it's the next item on the agenda, item number thirteen after that, that's, that's interesting.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero eight, supporting modifications to the, to the design and construction of the fifteenth street corridor between Grand Avenue and Lewis Street by the University of Wyoming. This would be at the corner of Willett, where Willett can, where Willett connects with, next to the cemetery.
Yeah, it's a little more complicated than that. Yeah, what, what's going on is that item thirteen allows U W to modify its plans for the remodel of Fifteenth Street. And as you know, they've practically taken over Fifteenth, Fifteenth Street. They're building dorms right there, they're putting in two roundabouts. And what this specific item does is allow U W, allow U W to, to move a bus stop that was planned to be on Fifteen, Fifteenth Street over to the other side of the Student Union on property that it owns on Thirteenth Street. And this seems like it might be a good idea because, well, the, the buses wouldn't have to navigate those roundabouts, it might relieve some congestions. However, the plans for this change haven't been run by the City Traffic Safety Commission as they should always be. Now, full disclosure, I actually sit on the city's Traffic Safety Commission. And so, so I would like to see the commission be able to discuss this proposal and make recommendations to council. Likewise, this is another problem. There's, there are lots of maps and charts in the, in the city council packet about this. But, and while they show plans for what would happen to Fifteenth Street, they show no plans for the replacement bus stop at all. So if city council approves this item without, as is, with, without looking into it more or having the Traffic Safety Commission look into it.
Is that a free pass to design it how they wish?
Exactly, they will, the city, city council will be approving this with, without having any idea what they're actually approving. In my opinion, this item should be redirected to the Traffic Safety Commission so that it's fleshed out further and city council has some idea of what it's approving if it approves this item.
What's the mission of that safety committee?
The Traffic Safety Commission is designed, the, the, the purpose is for it to represent the public. When we do things like make changes to our streets, make changes to, uh, other things related to traffic safety, that the public has input and gets a, gets a chance to, to comment on these things. One of the big things that it deals with is parking. And that's, that's another thing which is addressed in, you know, in, in, in some of the items before council. And well, it, it makes sure that, that, that council understands what the public wants, make sure that the public interest is served. And in the case of items involving U W, that U W doesn't just do whatever it wants with regard to things like parking in streets. We need to make sure that it doesn't take over thoroughfares that are, that are very important. There was a lot of controversy over, over its takeover of Lewis Street sometime back.
So without, without, without making any assumptions, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash zero eight, agenda item thirteen, it hasn't given the city of Laramie citizens full due process.
It really hasn't. It, the, the fact that it's coming up on the agenda tonight gives the public a chance to comment. But again, we haven't had, we haven't had a board or commission look at it, look at the, the, the plans in depth. And a city council meeting where you just approve a resolution really quick isn't the right venue for this. It really ought to be discussed in depth. There ought to be a sketch of what's being proposed to replace that bus stop, you know, and, and create a sort of a transit center there on campus because this is going to be a transit hub. And it, it just deserves more discussion than it's going to get at a regular council meeting. And that's the concern here, I think.
How many sit on the committee, the traffic committee, the commission that you're talking about?
Right now, we got five people.
Are there openings on that?
The, the opening, I'm actually not sure which of the posts are expiring or coming up. I know that I, as a member of that, of the Traffic Safety Commission, my, my, my appointment to it was just renewed. So I'm, I'm not exact, I'm not exactly sure when the, when the, the posts are coming up. There are, there are frequent openings on all the city boards and commissions and those are listed on the website.
Very good. And next on the agenda review, Brett Glass, this morning from Studio two fifty-five in the Laramie Plain Civic Center, this is the talk shop. Resolution twenty-five, twenty twenty-five dash twelve, Designating Recreation Project Request Priorities to the Albany County Recreation Board for Funding Consideration in Fiscal Year two thousand twenty-six.
Yes, this is, this is pretty mundane. And this is just, you know, it's a, basically what we have here is a, a document that just sort of expresses some general feel-good ideas for, for, for recreation. This is, you know, again, it's not specific. What's going to be interesting is in the future, you know, if the specific projects come up. So this isn't a big one. The next, it's actually, you know, the, the greater concern is actually with, more with the next item than with this one because that's a goal-setting document which is going to play directly into every item that council considers.
Agenda item fifteen, as we're discussing, of a twenty-two agenda night, Resolution twenty twenty-five dash thirteen, Adopting Policy Goals and Objectives for the city of Laramie for two thousand twenty-five.
Yep, this is a resolution adopting policy goals for the entire city for two thousand twenty-five. And this document is a result of retreat. It was held in early January where the council discussed their personal priorities for the city. Now, this discussion, the whole discussion was supposed to be available for playback by the public on YouTube, but the video is incomplete. They're, they're missing large portions of the meeting and the sound is garbled. So this is really the first look that members of the public are going to have unless they were physically present at that meeting at what happened there. Now, most of the goals in this document, if you look through them, are relatively boring and straightforward, such as promoting local transparency, promoting housing development. There are some that are obviously good, such as reexamination of the city's extremely complex Uniform Development Code and publication of a newsletter that tells the public what, what issues council intends to address. But there are a few controversial items in, hidden in this goals document that are worthy of discussion. One of them is hiring another dedicated city staff member or maybe multiple city staff members to regulate rental housing in Laramie. Now, the reason that this is controversial is that according to the city manager's office itself, the city has rejected fifty percent of all complaints filed with regard to rental housing issues. And of those, has not resolved fifty percent that remained. They've only actually resolved in the, in the three years that they, that this ordinance has been enforced. They've only resolved one way or another, maybe, maybe it's been actually a resolution just between the parties, twenty-one complaints. So that's seven complaints a year related to rental housing. Is this something which is worthy of hiring another full-time person? Probably not, it probably isn't a good use of money. So we really need to chime in and say, well, you know, maybe we should have a staffer that does something else devote a little bit of time to this part-time. We don't necessarily want to hire another full-time staffer to do this. And we, we don't want that person to, you know, a person to come in and be hired full-time and then make work for, to, to fill in the rest of that, their time. So that's, that's, that's an example of one of the things here that we want to look over carefully. The gold, the goals document also mentions addressing parking problems downtown. And that's wonderful, that's something we should prioritize. But it doesn't mention the parking problems near U W, which people in those neighborhoods face all the time, which students at the university and staff at the university face all the time. This deserves attention too. And this is something that we may want to modify before that goals document gets passed. Now, everything that comes before council, when you, when you take a look at this, the city council packet, is justified by something in this goals document. And so it's vital that the public make sure, if you, if you have an issue which you think council should be looking at, it's important that you request that they add it to this document because otherwise, it may never come before council at all. So it's really important that the public look this goals document over, comment on it. I've mentioned just, just a couple of things. You may find other things that are, are of interest to you. And so I recommend that you go to cityoflermy.org slash agenda center and click through to the agenda and then click through to this item, which is item fifteen, and find that goals document and see if it expresses everything you want to, you want to see council doing over the next year.
And the following item, any comments with respect to amending Laramie Municipal Code, Title Fifteen, related to the Unified Development Code, specifically Ordinance Number two thousand ninety-seven.
Yep, okay, well, item sixteen contains modifications and corrections to the city's really complex Uniform Development Code. This is a huge body of, of, of text restricting and regulating and directing development in Laramie. Almost anything you want to do involving improving your property, property, fixing your property or building something new is minutely regulated by the Uniform Development Code. And so this item makes some changes to it. Now, some of them simply fix grammatical mistakes or add clarifications. But a few of them actually really matter. And the thing that caught my eye was that there were a lot of changes related to signage. When you post a sign for your business, there are a lot of restrictions on how you can post the sign so that your businesses is, your business is recognized and seen and so that people can find it. And some of the changes there related to signage make the already restrictive code even more restrictive. So if you have a business of any kind in Laramie and you have signage, you're going to want to look this over and see if it causes any of your signs to become illegal. If you're thinking of putting one up, you may want to look to see if it prevents you from doing something sensible that you want to do. So that's the main thing I noticed in that section.
Did you notice that it would be retroactive and, and affect previously existing signs?
That's a problem that we have in Laramie. Unfortunately, our city's planning staff doesn't like things to be grandfathered. And so, yes, they very often try to make things retroactive and I don't think that should be because, well, you know, what you're authorized to do at the time is what you should be authorized to do. You shouldn't invest money and then discover that the robe's been pulled out from under you. So yes, that is a concern and it's another thing the public should comment about if it affects them.
Item seventeen, Original Ordinance Number two thousand ninety-eight, Amending Laramie Municipal Code Title Eight, Related to Nuisance Abatement.
Now, this is a relatively minor change. It talks about who pays for nuisance abatement if there is something that's declared a nuisance that the, the owner of a property isn't fixing. And this, this is, this is a relatively, relatively minor and simple thing.
Would that include abandoned vehicles?
Yes, it would, it would cause something like having, you know, it would cover something like having a whole bunch of junk cars on your property, for example, you know, piles of trash, things like that. It talks about who pays for cleaning it up. And it's not unreasonable. This is, this isn't one, probably, I, I'm going to say, it's probably not an item of great concern to the public. But look, you know, look it over if you're looking through the agenda because, you know, it, you know, it, it does, it especially, the, the situation I see here is it specifically has issues with regard to rental properties. If you, if you rent a property and your tenant does something, you get billed for the cleanup even though it might be the tenant's fault. And that's the one case where I think where people might want to comment on this. But overall, it's pretty fair. And so it's, it's not, it's not really a major concern.
If you're just joining us, we're reviewing, previewing rather, the city of Laramie agenda for city council regular meeting tomorrow night, six thirty P M at four oh six Iverson Street. And that brings us to item eighteen, Intergovernmental Agreement Between the City of Laramie and the Board of County Commissioners of the County of Albany, Wyoming for Implementation of the Laramie Growth Area Plan.
Yeah, well, the Laramie Growth Area Plan is just sort of a very general document that talks about the way the city is expected to grow out into the county, what's going to be annexed and, you know, what, what areas are going to be devoted to what purposes, how they're going to be zoned.
Is that a modification of the master plan?
The master plan is a little bit different.
Okay.
But, but in any case, there was a, the, the, the development plan, which again is cooperative between the city and the county, you know, is, was developed for, you know, was developed a couple of years ago when there were a lot of public meetings at the time. And it really, it, it doesn't set things in stone. The city and the county can change their mind about that. So really what this is, is a kind of a mundane agreement that expresses some nice general principles about, you know, the welfare of the community and says that the city and the county are going to cooperate on, on them. There, there, it's really just a feel-good document. And almost everything in the actual plan can be changed if suddenly we get a new opportunity to develop a, you know, big business or something else. So this, this again is really just sort of a nice memorandum of understanding. There's nothing specific enough in it for people to be worried about it passing. So this, again, this is a resolution which will probably just sail through with little or no discussion. Little or no discussion, this one even could have been on the consent agenda.
It actually, uh, brings up an opportunity for you to follow Albany County Commissioner. Uh, meetings at nine thirty every other Tuesday, uh, in February, February fourteenth. And then, uh, two weeks after that, nine thirty AM. Your Albany County Commissioners will meet in the county building, basement of the county building, county commissioners. Uh, meeting room and that, uh, opportunity for you to give additional or gain additional insights. Into the county's perspective on this intergovernmental agreement between the city and the county. In item nineteen, we discussed previously, that was the resolution authorizing financial support. Of the Pilot Hill Trailhead pro- uh, project from the Economic Development Fund. And amending appropriations for the fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. That bl- it brings us to public comments on non-agenda items. And a limit of three minutes per speaker. And when you're commenting on non-agenda items, the comments must be germane to city business over which council has control. Written or other materials must be submitted to the city clerk for public record and dissemination six. Count them, six days prior to the meeting, per city council rules of procedure, appendix B. My only thought here Brett is that if the public wants to make comment. In this fashion, it's six days prior required. Now, the city council themselves do not receive packets until Friday. Saturday, Sunday, Monday, Tuesday is the fourth day. For very important hundred forty-seven page packet this, this particular week. That's a baby packet, that's a very small packet in comparison to an entire year's review. Any comment with respect to this public comment section on non-agenda items from you today?
Well, this, eh, there was a time when city council was getting. A, a, a lot of comments at the beginning of the meeting and they actually eliminated the public comment period at the beginning of the meeting. And forced everybody to wait to the end, and this actually deterred public comment because you never knew when the end was going to be, you had to. You had, you had to devote your entire evening to going to this, to go to, going to the city council meeting, just to make a comment at the very end. And, uh, because this, this public comment period is at the end, very few people actually, uh, comment during it. It's, uh, uh, people don't know when it's gonna come, they have to, they have to already have decided to be there. Um, as for the written materials being submitted to the city clerk for public record six days prior. Um, that very rarely happens, um, in fact, the coun- the, the city council is very liberal about this. If you were to bring materials to distribute to the council on the night of the meeting.
Generally allowed?
They would generally just pass it out, so, uh, that's, uh, that, that's really just a, just a detail. You know, in case you have some, I, I, maybe if you have some massive materials to distribute, um, but in reality, again, that doesn't happen.
Public comments, were those intrusive and, and troublesome at the beginning? I, in, in the two thousand twenty-four meetings which I attended, seldom. Was this even utilized by the public at the beginning of meeting.
Yeah, well, sometimes there, there are people who are, who want to stage protests during city council meetings. And sometimes there, there, there are people who are, who just want to harangue council, so. Um, several years ago, mainly like, you know, twenty seventeen, twenty eighteen, when, uh, you know, when we, when Mayor Polikas was, was mayor. Um, they, uh, they felt that they had to limit things and frankly, I think the limit of three minutes per speaker. In a total of half an hour for the, in, the entire thing at the beginning of the meeting has solved that problem better. I, I, I don't think it's, uh, I, I don't think it's a general problem now. There was a time when, uh, when, when, when people were almost disruptive during the public comment period. But I think by just establishing some rules of order, they've eliminated that problem. Um, the thing of, the three-minute limit is more of a concern when the council is discussing individual items. And there's a lot of detail and a speaker is gonna run out of time during those three minutes to, to cover everything. I, I've seen people actually bring in other people. So to, to head, to, to take the next three minutes and continue a presentation because of that. So I don't think there's a problem with these general comments being three minutes, I, I think that council might wanna consider revising. The amount of time that people are given when they're commenting on individual items when they're getting into a great deal of detail.
Fair enough, uh, consideration item twenty-one, consideration of future council work session topics.
Yep, okay, well, finally, at the very end of the meeting after public comment and just before adjournment. Um, council considers what future topics they're gonna have for, for work sessions. Now, remember, way, way back on the consent agenda, they already approved a list of, 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 of topics they knew they wanted to consider. So this time is reserved for adding new things to the list and, and, and talking about that. And we, you'll see, um, if you, if you actually go to the website and look at the agenda. You'll see a list of the upcoming topics that they've already scheduled and it's, it's, it's nice, it's a good detailed list. And this is a good place to look for, for items that you, you might wanna comment on or, you know, topics you might wanna com- uh, comment on. But it's also a place where if you commented during the, during that public comment period, council ought to work on this issue. And it wasn't there before, this is a chance for them to talk about, uh, about actually having a work session about it. So this is a good thing, again, it's worthwhile coming and, and commenting and waiting for that comment period at the end of the meeting. If you really want something to be considered as a future recession topic.
And finally, twenty-two adjournment.
Yep, usually there's a motion to adjourn and council has a rule that they won't, won't consider new items after nine PM. So that they, uh, they don't, their meetings don't run super late, they don't get very tired. And so they usually do adjourn, they may not adjourn right at nine, but they won't go much past that.
Yeah, they have, uh, no additional agenda items will be introduced at a regular city council meeting after the hour of nine thirty PM. Unless the majority of city council members present vote to extend the meeting. And that wraps our preview. Uh, Brett Glass, myself, Eric Henderson, on the Talk Shop and our review of city council agenda items. It's a preview to tomorrow's city council meeting, six thirty PM in four oh six Iverson Streets, City Hall. Council chambers, any final comments on our discussion, Brett?
Well, um, I think we've pretty much covered everything, I think the important thing is for the, uh, for the public to be informed and get involved. I'm hoping that that newsletter effort that was talked about as a gold, as goal is going somewhere. In the meantime, I think that, uh, K O C A is doing a great thing by, uh, you know, by, by disseminating this information. I hope that, uh, that more, uh, local media will do so, because it's very important to stay involved. Make sure that our city council is doing the right thing for the city of Laramie.
Recently, there was a tour of the Fourth Street Urban Renewal, uh, project. And did you have a chance to attend that?
No, I did not attend that, but I've looked over the site previously. Um, the, uh, you know, the, the main concern with this urban renewal project is that it is, it is. Again, it's sort of robbing Peter to pay Paul, it's doing something called tax increment financing. Um, to finance, to finance a project who's basically, whose parameters were dictated by political issues. City council wanted to have a sort of an urban development, they wanted this to, and we'll see if it turns out that way. To supposedly be affordable dense housing, it's, it's, uh, it, it's, it's not something which fits with the rest of Laramie, the character is very different. And, uh, so the, the, the controversial thing about that project is that it is so different from what we've seen in Laramie before. We have to see if in the end, there's, there are, there are takers, if people want, really wanna live in those apartments, if businesses. Down on the first floor of their, of the, the big new complex are really going to be successful, so that is, uh, that is a controversial one.
If an idea is merited in a free economy. Commercial interests would invest in this wholeheartedly without subsidization from taxpayer dollars, right?
Uh, you'd think so, and in fact, you know, that's, uh, you, you should, you know, there, there are a lot of people who really believe that, uh. Taxpayer support should be reserved for project, uh, be reserved for projects where there really is some terrible blight that needs to be remedied. A good example is the Hitching Post in Cheyenne. That, uh, that, that basically, basically this was a toxic waste site. Um, there was asbestos, there were all sorts of problems, there were, you know, there, there, there were, uh, there, there, there were homeless people living among the ruins out there. Um, the site was a total mess and in that case, it definitely, uh, yeah, def- definitely merited having the city devote some funds to. To cleaning it up so that it could be used productively by, again, by the private sector. But here we have a situation where we have some old buildings which the city itself created. And any mess there was crea- was the city's responsibility to clean up. And it's not clear in this case that the development, which again is being very much micromanaged by the city. Is what's needed, because you didn't get a private sector investor coming in and saying, this is definitely what we need in Laramie, we see the demand for it. So the Laramie, you know, La- Laramie's Fourth Street Project is a little more dicey. Um, we'll, we'll have to see whether the, wh- whether in fact, what the city council is dictating is really what's needed.
It's important to note, it's early in this project. And the earlier the public comments, reviews and comments, reviews again and comments. The more input each and every one of you citizens out in the public have regarding the governance. And the activity and the actions of our, of our city and the government that we elected. And so, please, take the time, invest. Did you know that the agenda was eight pages for tomorrow night? Did you know that a hundred and forty-seven page packet supports each one of those? Now, you mentioned something that's really important, if you go online, Brett, you mentioned item by item, agenda by en- agenda. You can see which items specifically reference each one of those, uh, agenda items. If you print the entire packet, it's not paginated and you will not have specific reference to anything. Uh, you'll have all the information, but it's a bundled group.
Yes, and I, when I campaigned for a seat on the city council and volunteered to spend my time going through these packets, I commented on that. Um, the way our city council current, currently works, on Friday afternoon, they get this huge packet. Which again is just a gigantic information dump and they have the weekend to digest it. Before the following Tuesday's meeting and so does the public, so it's easy for things to slip by. Uh, city council members are, are paid very poorly for that amount of time, you know, they're, they're, they're paid, uh. Uh, they, they, they could spend, literally if they're paid minimum wage, could spend hundreds of dollars worth of time, um, reviewing that. And, uh, a- a- and, uh, they, they may miss things because, well, it's big and it's awkward. And it's not really well organized, um, so the public has to help. And this is again where we all have to get involved, review the things, point things out to our city council members. Make sure that stuff in there is considered and nothing slips by, because it's way too easy for important things to, 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 uh, fly under the radar. So that's why we're doing this program this morning, I hope it's helped.
As do I, this is the Talk Shop and our City of Laramie City Council Preview for tomorrow, February fourth, two thousand twenty-five. Meeting starts at six thirty, we'll see you there.